We move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? And is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a session. Motion carries five zero. Reports and staff communications, page twenty-one in our packets. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes, members of the council. So with our bids due back here in the next couple of weeks for our water capital improvement project, the approximately eleven million dollar water infrastructure improvement project. What we were recently informed of that due to the state's financing process, we could expect extended delays between the billing or the actual construction work and the billing from the contractor and then also reimbursed in front of the state. So if the state also will not find specifically for the reimbursement, however, they expect it, all things being normal, to be able to begin in August. So construction would occur, start to occur well before then. So we are going to be looking at some different cash flow lending and borrowing, which comes with an added expense that will not be reimbursed by the state. So we'll be coming back with an agenda item related to that at some point in the future as we move that particular project forward. Well, staff did meet with county officials just this morning to discuss the county-wide sales tax for roads and their proposal, heard some feedback from the city, from staff regarding that. And then they're certainly looking and interested in what will be, you know, what the council would be willing to support. So we'll also be monitoring that particular situation. And then we're also looking into some interesting technology that could create some efficiencies in terms of the rental housing inspection program utilizing essentially an app for inspections that could, you know, keep the costs, the fees associated with rental housing inspection program alive. So we have, you know, an extended rollout period. We don't anticipate to start rental housing inspections until January of twenty twenty-five. So we're kind of exploring this option as kind of a unique approach towards the rental housing inspection program. And so I believe that the Measure Z application that the police department submitted is still alive and maybe the chief can comment on that next. But a couple of items coming up here this week. Tomorrow, Wednesday is the advisory committee meeting here at three o'clock here at the council chambers. And then there's also our traffic committee meeting, which is also three o'clock, but that's on Thursday of this week. So with that, unless there's any questions for Camille, happy to return it back to the mayor.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor Wilson?
No questions, thank you.
Mayor, member Orr, member Wilson. Okay, and as far as Measure Z, chief, I've heard that we have a decent chance, but have you heard anything?
I have not heard that sort of results. We did last week present our case in front of the Measure Z committee. They ended at four o'clock and they had not made a decision at that time. That's where they're supposed to come back this Thursday. And that's for our record split position.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Keep us up to date. Okay. We will close our reports and move on to special call items. Taxpayer Deception, AKA Taxpayer Protection and Accountability Act, page twenty-six in our packet. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes. So I recently was able to attend the Leaky California Cities City Managers Conference. And really what the central focus of that particular conference is a tax measure that, or a ballot measure, a proposal called the Taxpayer Protection and Accountability Act, which the Leaky California Cities is calling the Taxpayer Deception Act. I, you know, I previously worked for, worked alongside with CSAC, California State Association of Counties and the Leaky California Cities for a very long time and have never seen either organization be this adamant about the need to oppose this particular measure. As the council is aware, every couple of decades, there are ballot measures statewide put on the, on the, on the ballot statewide that constrain the local government's ability to conduct finance operations, revenue raising and that, that sort of thing and limit local control. So if you recall, one of the kind of core central tenants of the Leaky California Cities is to preserve local control. So that's the control of the city council, that is the control of the voters in the city in order to determine these matters. So there are a number of impacts from the Taxpayer Protection and Accountability Act. To the, to start with fees and charges. So as, as the council is aware, the city has fees for things like building permits, inspections, those sorts of things. Those are state mandated requirements. As a city, we have a responsibility to, to issue building codes, that sort of thing. The only way for the city to recover costs is to establish fees. And so the, the change here is, is really taking the fee structure and creating an added burden for the city to reflect the actual cost and using clear and convincing evidence for fees, which is very high standards, a significant change in how the fees are established. It also implies that there is a adjudicatory process for each and every fee established. So in other words, you know, there would be, it's not well-defined legislation, but you know, significant appellate process for individual fees, everything from abatements to fines and fees and penalties, that sort of thing for, for violations or for voluntary interactions, such as with the, you know, pulling build permit. So the, the legislation is also very unclear in terms of how this is administered. So we can expect, just as with Proposition thirteen in the seventies, there'd be a series of court decisions and a lot of additional funding spent on attorneys to kind of adjudicate this. And, and with Prop thirteen, that took decades and is still potentially ongoing to kind of iron out some of these, some of these differences. The other significant impact specifically, you know, that dramatically impacts Riedel itself is that tax measures passed after January first of twenty twenty-two would be invalidated unless that they had a, a sunset date on. So the council may recall back in twenty fourteen, voters passed Measure U, one percent sales tax. That was a five-year sunset. Measure J was passed in twenty eighteen with a five-year sunset. And part of the problem that the council had difficulty was doing long-range projections of how can we staff up the police department? How can we do projections when we don't know if this revenue stream is going to be available into the, into the future? And so Measure O was a reduction by twenty-five percent of the tax from one percent to point seven five percent. That was also passed by the voters, but it did not include a sunset date. And the reasoning and the logic behind that was that we needed some certain predictability of the revenue stream so that we could make appropriate planning choices, whether it's with the police department or with roads, which have been the two primary beneficiaries of that, along with Measure X, the cannabis tax, helped push our funding, our, our pavement condition index up twenty-five percent to now one of the leading, from one of the lowest-rated cities in Humboldt County to now one of the highest-rated cities in Humboldt County. And then it's also been able to fund staffing up in the police department, where we went from, you know, periods of time where there were maybe three officers on duty at any given time to, to, I think our staffing is at eight or nine. And then we've also had to bear the burden of things like the funding, the RIMS system, which is a records information management system that all the departments are required to be on, that shares with the district attorney, those sorts of things. There've been investments in vehicles. The council may recall in the past, we had cars dispatched to incidents that broke down. And then we actually had an incident where my first month here, that occurred in the car that was sent, the other police car that was sent also broke down. So, so, so the city's come a long way and I think we have a lot to demonstrate as to where the improvements are in the community. Again, streets being paved, the investments in. So again, the, the measure was passed, Measure O, on November ninth, twenty twenty-two by the voters. And this measure is projected to raise approximately three hundred thousand dollars annually. So that's at the reduced rate. So if, if the Taxpayer Protection and Accountability Act were to pass, it would invalidate our Measure O, which would be effective January first of twenty twenty-five. So our current tax is set to expire at the, at the end of December. So, so I cannot, you know, stress enough how impactful this would be. It's essentially a fifth of the general fund revenue, of which, again, the majority of, of general fund revenues go to the police department. And we have been able to carve off some of that for street repairs in the community. There are, there are some other provisions and changes associated with it. For example, it limits the community's ability to do advisory measures on, on taxes where the community weighs in on where funding should go or, you know, whether, you know, providing direction to the council from those. So an example would be Measure X, where we had advisory measure on that would no longer be allowed prior to Measure X, we had an advisory measure. So there are, you know, significant, you know, changes and issues with this that really limit the voter's ability to control and have input on city operations, city finances. And then there's, it also subsequently, you know, restricts the council's ability and lowers the local control that the community has. And so, so again, this is the highest priority of the Leaky California Cities. I want to bring this to the council as soon as possible. I don't have a, a letter of opposition or a resolution attached to this agenda, but I'm looking to see if there's any questions that maybe it will answer or answer at a future day and bring. What we're asking for is that the council give direction to staff to go ahead and, and issue another agenda item with that official position statement. So, thank you.
Thank you, city manager. And so we never, we were both under the impression that we had already done a letter of opposition for this. We have not as a city?
No, something.
I don't.
It was something else.
It might have been something else.
That was a question at the league's meeting. And they, there were seven cities that did, and we were feeling pretty like we were.
No, you're saying there was something else though, that we had jumped on a board with, but it was county.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will, I will check back in to, to double check.
I think that is one of the most important things we have on our calendar right now to deal with is this. I have talking points that the league has provided that I will make copies of and give to everyone who can talk about it, meant to agree on it, forgot, but that everyone can look at. There's, there's talking points for councils and for elected bodies, but there's also talking points that we can go out and talk to the constituents, kind of make them aware of, of what this will do. And the fact that, the, the thing that's so important is it's one of those measures that the title will cause you to check it, to agree with it before you ever read it. If you are a person who doesn't want to really be bothered, but you're just voting, that, that title, it will, you're like, yeah, that sounds good. So it's very, it's vitally important that we get the word out, that this is not good for cities and it's really not good for Riedel because it will, I mean, we couldn't put another measure on the, on the ballot for, how, it would kick us back, what, two years, Kyle?
Yes, it, it passed and then subsequently we, the sales tax wasn't being generated January of twenty twenty-five. We would have to wait to resubmit it to the voters in November of twenty twenty-six. So realistically, and then there's also the implementation time period after the ballot. So realistically, it's two years and six hundred thousand dollars, you know, hit to the general fund, assuming that it's passed in, in twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. I was just going to ask for talking points because I'm, I'm in favor of opposing.
I'm ready to oppose.
I'm not doing it. Yeah.
You're right, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I'm in favor, I want to ask a question, but yeah, I'm in favor of opposing it. Yeah. I'm just not clear on your position, how the state's doing this. But that's, go ahead, William.
No, that's, is your, if you have a question, go.
When it says that the, the voters can't, the locals have decided to send the local voters, who's taking over what the local voters will be doing? Is it the state? Can they hand in here some more?
Yes, this, this item is, is a, is a, is a voter initiative. So it is, has been created by a group called the California Business Roundtable, which is a collection of essentially, you know, California-based corporations that, that are, you know, interested in, in pushing this forward. So it's similar to Measure A in a sense where, you know, it would be, they were able to raise signatures and get something on the ballot that then, you know, creates a law and amends the constitution in a way that the legislature cannot, you know, just amend it, has to go back to the voters. And so it becomes kind of this straitjacket that provides no flexibility. And again, it has to, it's going to spend decades in the courts. The big winners would be attorneys for, for working this out over time, the details of the language. And, you know, it'll end up eventually in the Supreme Court, potentially subsequent ballot measures as the court approves things that certain people don't believe is the appropriate interpretation of the, of the text. And, and again, in the meantime, it would, it would place really a very, very high burden to, to do the justification for, you know, for fees, for fines and penalties and even abatement costs, you know, would have to meet this very, very high standard that's not, that can, that is, you know, potentially challengeable by, by those individuals at any time.
So besides the fact that it's eliminating the sales tax, it's taking away the ability to, for us to pay, I guess, when we say fees, like our fees, our building fees and stuff, does it take away all of those as well?
It doesn't necessarily take, take them away. It just creates a higher threshold for establishing those fees, potentially putting them out to voters for voter approval. Another example would be when the fire district annexed Scotia. That is, the council may recall, the districts to the south of us were not approving fire protection fees. And so, so basically those districts were imploding. And so the fire district annexed to the southwest Scotia and request. And that those, those fees were extended into those, those jurisdictions. Now, if that were to happen again, post, post this measure, it's, is, it's also very unclear as to how those, those fees would, would translate over to the new expanded district. So it's, this is part of the problem is it's not very clear as to about just those areas in the annex portion, or is it the entire new district or, and so on and so forth. So there's just a lot of questions that could raise that, again, ultimately only the courts are, are going to work out.
Awesome. It's just increasing, if I'm hearing this right, they're just increasing a layer of bureaucracy on top of what we already have.
Yeah, so.
That we have to litigate in order to get.
As you can imagine, if we have to end up litigating each and every, you know, fee or abatement issued, the cost dramatically escalates and really brings those gears to, to a halt. And I would just add that there already are a lot of, you know, protections. You know, the council is in charge of those fees and setting them to this day. They have to be reasonable. They have to be, you know, set on actual time, you know, spent projections and whatnot. And so, so there already are, you know, projections in those regards. And the council is the one who, you know, safeguards those and make sure that they're appropriate.
They don't go away from us. They're not taking that power away from this council.
In terms of setting, of setting the fees and, well, in term, in terms of challenges to, to the fees, you would be losing quite a bit of discretion over it.
All right. Thank you.
No questions, but I'm against it.
City manager, thank you. City manager, is this the one where the voting threshold changes to? Isn't this the one where now it has, everything has to be a super majority of votes to get some kind of a privilege? Isn't it? I think it is. Sure, so the vote to pass this is fifty plus one.
Yeah.
If it passes, everything that we do after that will be the super majority.
Yeah, it's, it's the, the state legislature has also proposed a voter initiative that would not allow a, a ballot proposition that's only passed by fifty percent plus one to then set a higher threshold for future votes. So if you want to set the threshold, what the legislature is saying is, well, then you need to also achieve that very threshold, you know, your ballot measure needs to achieve that very threshold of itself.
And is that already on the ballot or?
It will be on the ballot.
So both of those things will be on the ballot. There's two different, different measures. They will both be on the ballot. So let's say that one didn't pass, then it would be fifty plus one and a majority because if it's a ballot measure, it can go either way, right?
Yeah, of course.
So that's something to think about too. Another reason why it's so important that this thing doesn't pass. Are there any questions? French, you just, nothing? Any answers?
I mean, you know, so the fifty plus one, that's a little where these two things that are coming up that hold on. It's not from there on out that will, that will be the measure like for our voting.
No, not for, it's, it's about this tax, tax measure, but I think what will happen is if you, something is on the ballot, a tax measure, a Measure J or Measure L or whatever, then it'll be a super majority has to pass it, even though to get to that point, it owes to fifty plus one to say that. So it's not, no. Not good. Okay, so this one informational, yes?
So that's just informational and so, so staff will, will come back at a future day with a letter and we will go back into the, the archives, make sure we're not duplicating a previous agenda item, which is entirely possible.
I think it was.
Well, we definitely did that.
Yeah.
Definitely. But yeah, but let's do that as soon as possible if that's what happens. Thank you. Now we move on to the second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number four zero four dash two zero two four, amending the Riedel Municipal Code, establishing a cannabis cultivation tax guarantee, page forty in our packets.
Mayor Barnes, members of the council, the first reading introduction of this will be heard on February twentieth. And as you just indicated, is a ordinance that would establish a tax guarantee for the payment of cultivation taxes. As the council is aware, we had a couple of farmers in the plateau. Past few years, we had difficulty in paying their taxes. Ultimately, they were paid, but we still have a concern in what we call a grow and go concept. And we want to ensure that we get paid by those farmers and specifically the farmers that are on the Inmore Plateau. The ones that we have where the, whoever signed the Humboldt Riedel Business Park, they have actually been spot on every time their taxes were due. So basically what this ordinance does is it allows the city to establish a tool that allows us to require either a surety bond, a deposit Nastro, or a letter of credit from a bank, basically guaranteeing that the taxes will pay at the end of the year. The city attorney did have a couple of changes to the ordinance. They were in significant nature. We did incorporate those changes. So as the ordinance is presented in your packet, which is on page forty-two, it is in its final format, about to be adopted tonight. If your council choose to do so. With that, if there's any questions, those are more than happy to answer them. If not, we recommend the Campbell dot ordinance number four 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 dash two zero two four, establishing a cannabis cultivation tax guarantee.
Thank you. Councilmember Orr?
No question.
Councilmember Wilson?
No, I think it's a good idea that we'll want to get the guarantees.
Councilmember Woodall? Mayor Wilson? No questions. So the only changes are the little red ones in the back where you just change the title.
Variants of the agenda.
Yeah. Any handwrits? Any remarks? Any questions? Is there a motion to approve an adopt ordinance number four zero four dash two zero four, two zero two four?
So moved.
Yeah, second? Second, now a motion, a second? Motion carries five zero. Council Communications.
Mayor Wilson?
Okay, taking a big deep breath. We will watch your mailboxes for the, or, you know, around town for the April version of the Chamber Commerce Newsletter. I wrote an article in it. It's about feral cats. Be surprised. Okay, so I did attend the Cal Cities Redwood Empire Division meeting in Willis. It was lovely. I went to the school board meeting last Thursday. They're currently in budget time, just like we are, and under the same wing for reimbursement from the state, things look fairly scary for them. So that is where they're at. I attended the Community Resource Center Volunteer Fair Mixer thing and it was really nice. We have several local organizations either in Riedel or, you know, close by that are really seeking volunteers and would like to be a presence in this community. So I did collect some names, but if anybody. So I did collect some names, but if anybody listening or attending this meeting says, hey, I got an extra hour a week, let me know, I'll put you to work. As city manager said, we have a nuisance advisory committee meeting tomorrow here at three P M. We have a beautification, walkability and pride committee meeting here in the chambers on Friday at four P M. I have a reading meeting on Monday. And my last thing I'd like to ask for is to put on the agenda a parks master plan sometime in the future, you know, it's not a huge degree. And I know that while we don't have any parks, it might be a master plan. But if we don't have a master plan, we're never going to have any parks. So I would like to, you know, go ahead and and start whatever work it takes to get a parks master plan on the books for the city of Rio Del. And that's it for me, thank you.
So everyone in agreeance, you know, her with wanting to do that? Over, ask her questions, see.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm in agreement, okay? You might have any questions for Councilmember Carr? I just meant for regarding the park plan. Master plan. We got, okay, all right. So can you, at some point, put that on the agenda, please? Thank you. I also went to the emergency preparedness class, Grunberg, Blue Lake, the senior one, it was really nice. And even though you know a lot about it, the things you should do, sometimes you need a little nudge to get it going. And that, it was really nice. And Sarah from the Resource Center said it was really nice on Sunday too for the Spanish speaking people. Later this month, they're going to have a food truck eatery on the last Friday, which would be three thirty-one at the volunteer fire department. And they showed a fundraiser for the fire department in March. Yeah. Food trucks there.
I think that'd be the twenty-nine, won't it? Did you say the thirty-first or the twenty-nine?
I don't know, when I looked at my things on the phone, I thought it said.
Three thirty-one?
Yeah. I was on the check. Okay. Then also on the Resource Center with the fire department is also going to have an Easter egg hunt on Saturday, March thirtieth at ten A M. in the morning. So I hope a lot of people will come with their kids because it should be nice. They're going to have the Easter bunny there. And I will list the first meeting next month, I'll be out in about a week. Thank you. Councilor Orr.
I have an H C O G meeting on Thursday and other than that, very nice.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I have a R C E A meeting next, next Thursday, is a monthly meeting. But also on note, whether or not you saw it in the Los Angeles outpost, there's a red and black one or two. The directors, Matthew Marshall of R C E A has asserted his resignation effective, you know, his last day will be the third, whatever the last day of working day in March is, many, the third first of Sunday or something. Anyway, he's retiring, which is a big loss to R C E A for his his signing there, his.
Fifteen years or something?
Yeah, I think he's fifteen. He's been there twice. I was there years ago and then left and then came back. But he's been there, I think, just about the creation of the whole time. So as they stated in the article, the business, R C E A is pretty stable, has a good staff. It's just that we have to go through this procedure of hiring E D, which is always, H S M A took the better part of three years to to do that. And it'll be, this one may be more complicated and you don't know where again, it's a lot more technical. So it is worth it, just wanted to make that.
Thank you. You're right, Ken. That's not the name. So I wanted to mention that, so what's the name that's down there? So what's the name, May? Oh, May, okay. Yeah.
May thirty-first, sorry, I got it, it's on the paste, Doug.
Yeah, okay.
May thirty-first. Right away, we'll remind you.
Five thirty, eight thirty, okay. Don't want to miss the food.
No.
And, okay, and there's there's an invitation to the mayor and the city council from the League of Women Voters to come to their state of the community on Friday, April nineteenth. I will copy it and put one in every month's basket and think I would like to go. Yes, Papa Karen. I have a League of California Cities Policy Committee meetings Thursday and Friday of this week. And that's all I have. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So what?
Have a motion. There's no. April second.